Okay, and we're being videotaped by Area 58. You know, one of the best camera people that got down there is doing the camera work tonight. We'll see just how good she is. The first thing on the agenda, of course, is our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
You don't do that anymore. Okay, the first thing we have on our agenda is for everybody to pay the toll.
Yeah, that's it.
Now, we have Salted. And, I'm sorry.
Charles.
Charles is here representing Salted. And am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah.
And we left our discussion off is that you were gonna come back and explain a little bit more to exactly what what the elements were and what, if any responsibility we'd have if we were to go along with your proposal.
Right, right. So, as we left off the, and I jumped right into razzle-dazzle last time.
Yeah, and I-
But we had to go back to-
The basics.
You know, the basics.
Yes.
And so, I guess what I'll do is I'll recap that. We're working with, just a little bit.
You know, I appreciate that because again, I apologize. You were scheduled for quarter ten, which is too late at night anyway. Our last meeting had gone late. So when we began that whole thing, it was close to eleven o'clock, so-
You were talking to zombies.
I felt bad for y'all. It was just, it was late for everybody.
And it was a difficult night, too.
It was, obviously.
So I appreciate you coming back.
Emotionally charged. So, what we're, what we have here is we're dealing with the net metering, Massachusetts net metering regulations. We have, and would you like me to-
Yes, please.
-call a little bit more of that?
Sure.
So, what that, in Massachusetts net metering regulations, we can generate on remote fields or it can be on town property, municipal property. That requires RFP and some other, you know, and other exercises in between. But either way, whether we're on a town land or a remote property as a private property, you generate on these properties, the credits, the generation goes to the grid. Credits are given for the generation that's put into the grid. We then, as an entity, whether it's a town-owned land or a private land, direct those credits to a municipal entity, and there's ways you can do it to private. For our range of motion here, we're talking about municipal entity, the town Halifax. So what happens is, generation is made, is done on the property. The generation goes into the grid, credits are generated. They are then sent to town Halifax through what's called Schedule Z from the net metering regulations. What that does is it assigns, the Schedule Z just names the generation site and the GPU account number of the municipal entity here at Halifax, in this case. So, all the generation credits are then sent to the town. And a hundred percent of the generation, our generation credit is sent to the town. Now, at that point, the mechanics are, you retain a certain portion of the credit to give you a twenty percent net savings on your energy costs. And that includes your supply, transmission, distribution, so your whole aggregate cost. Okay? And then you're gonna get, you're gonna retain a portion of the credit that we send you. The hundred percent credit we send you, you're gonna take a portion of the credits, roughly twenty percent. Because the tariff rates and the rates that you pay are similar. So we'll just say for ease of numbers, twenty percent. It's gonna give you a twenty percent net savings. The rest of that, excuse me, credit is then returned to us and we pay off our capital, you know, our debt load.
Now, when you say returned to you, returned to you in cash?
In a check.
In a check.
I just wanted that to be clear for-
Yes. So there's, it's a billing cycle. It's a, you know, a counting cycle that you go through. Now, and then people oftentimes, especially early on in this experience, you know, several years ago now, when this first started, people were like, "Oh, you know, this, why? Why would you do this? It sounds too good to be true." This is what's called for in the net metering regulations. We can't, if we didn't do this sort of round robin counting function, we can't get the full value of our credit. So we're, and the reason being is that cities and towns and other municipal entities are not really set up tax-wise. It's very difficult, can be done, but they, to take on this debt load, we use large scale. So what they envisioned in the regulations was a private part, private-public partnering, where private entities will own, operate, maintain, fund the whole system, and share with, and this was done deliberately to allow municipalities to be part of net metering without having to try to own the system.
Can I pause you for a second?
Sure.
Because I really wanna understand this. So, the eighty percent roughly that your company maintains is really to pay for the solar field that you've built, correct?
Yes.
And profit.
And profit.
They're making money.
Yes. No, 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 I just-
So, but firstly, there's a return on investment period, profit comes after.
Yeah, no, but you're making money, so I mean, it's part of how you make your money.
Eventually, yes, correct.
How soon will you make money?
The, at this point, it's a normal return on investment period, five, seven years, I think. Things have become more and more expensive these days, whereas if you would ask me the same question three years ago and we were fortunate enough to not have had any problems with what the legislature has done, we would've been able to probably return on investment quicker. But there's been, because of the legislative stops and starts and what we've been through and some of the changes that have occurred in the legislation over the last couple of years, the margins have gone away a lot. And everything seems, seeming more expensive, we're being charged more from utilities, which obviously just translated into a longer return period, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sure. Are we considered, you know, the owners of this net system?
No.
Because my concern is that if something should go awry, what are our responsibilities as the host?
Sure, so-
Liabilities?
There really isn't any liability from your standpoint. As a matter of fact, the contracts that we've supplied you, if you have a chance to look, and I'm sure you will, you know, as you get through, it's pretty thick, you know, so. But in there, there's, excuse me, failure to perform, context, you know, language. It says if we don't, if we fail to give you what we told you we would, then we have to cure that or pay, essentially pay. We have liability in that area. But we own the project. We own the actual project. You are just essentially-
Figurehead.
You're purchasing the credits. That's it.
The credits that we turn around and use to pay for our electric?
It is, that's what they, it's an assignment process. But really, you're purchasing, so in a sense, purchasing those credits and that round robin, that counting function.
Assuming that those credits are of a value that works for us. In other words, they're not more expensive than what we could buy on the market. But we're tied into a contract. Not that I anticipate the market going down.
What do you mean? What do you buy on the market?
Well, if we, if we, we're gonna use the credits to pay for our electricity, correct? So, I assume that they're gonna have an assigned value, the SRECs, or the credits?
So, the credits, yes, they have a value and they're set, they're set in a tariff, which, which is, as I said, it's very similar to what you're paying, the tariff rates that are set.
Does that fluctuate, that tariff?
It does.
Okay, so the, I don't wanna, what I'm getting at is, I don't wanna be in a situation where we're buying these credits at X and we could've actually paid less than X on the open market for electricity, or-
Okay, so let's, that's why I'm glad you went this, because I wanna clarify one thing. Your energy supply contract is completely separate. Okay, so this has no effect on your supply contract, you're not buying any power?
I understand, but if we can buy power for less money than we're paying for the, for the credits, that's what I was getting at. Would we get into a situation like that?
So, you're, that actually really is not the, what you should be concerned with. Because we're sharing our credit with you. The only thing you should be concerned with is if there's a major catastrophic turn in the marketplace that takes it to a point where you no longer benefit from, there's no credit to share.
Yeah, yeah.
And in that case, your toes are gonna be tapping, because you're gonna be paying almost zero for your, your, in order for that to happen, the rate for your supply would have to go to almost zero, which is highly unlikely.
Right, I understand. I just, I just wanted to establish that it is, there is some volatility there.
There is, but it's always been, it's been going up since this started. I mean, it's been rising with the rates of the power, so. Good question, you know, to understand the parameters, but that shouldn't really be a concern and separate from your, your supply costs.
In the terms of any contract that we should, if we should decide to go with, what's the terms of the contract, for how much?
Twenty-year contract, twenty-year term.
Which is pretty standard in the industry.
Very, yeah, very standard. I haven't really seen anything less, and I've only seen-
Is it null and void if we no longer sit up here?
I'm sorry?
No.
I think it finds her, but.
Best you-
The net metering rates that you're talking about, is that tied into National Grid? Is that the basis? And we're a National Grid area?
Yeah, right, right, right.
So your rates are based on National Grid rate?
Yes, it's tied, they're set with the tariff.
Okay.
So, so the National Grid rate is also set with the tariff.
Okay, so that's what the net metering is, so-
And the net metering rate is, it almost exactly reflects the tariff. They're always like points apart, okay? So, yeah, that's how that-
I think, what I wanna understand is, National Grid is the rate that this is based on.
Right.
So if you have them going the open market, you buy it from someplace in Tennessee, and Tennessee is cheaper, the net credits, if I'm correct-
I'm still-
-are still based on National Grid.
That, that's what I was trying to get to.
So you're still gonna save money on that end if you're buying it cheaper from someplace in Tennessee.
Right.
Okay, okay, let me give you, let me give you an example that might help, okay? Is that, say you were, do you have a third-party supplier, or you actually supply and give them supplies from National Grid?
We have entered into an agreement for a third-party supplier, I believe.
Okay. So what you sometimes will find actually is if you, there's the only, the reason why you're entering into an agreement with a third-party supplier is to try to save money.
From our usual supplier.
Right. And that usually adds up to a few points.
So if you're tied to National Grid, that, or more or less-
So, say you go with a third-party supplier and you're able to get a few points lower than what you've been paying with National Grid. In reality, that actually is fine, that's fine from our standpoint, because now there's, it takes less of our credit to give you your twenty percent net savings.
Right.
Right.
Okay? So, have at it.
Yeah.
Bargain away, do the best you can.
Because it helps you, too.
It kinda helps us, too.
Yeah, right.
One of the things that I think that's important to note with this whole round robin is that it's one of those situations where it actually behooves us, that we're all sort of on the same team here. We want, we have the same objectives. We don't wanna over-supply you with powers with what are the concerns that the market had, because then we don't get paid.
Right.
So we wanna make sure that you're gonna get the right amount and we're not gonna overburden you with credits.
Well, that's, yeah, right.
And we don't wanna, you know, we wanna make sure you get as much as you can take, because obviously we wanna maximize what we can do with you and make sure that we're not wasting, you know, credits one way or the other.
And what happens if your company should ever go out of business?
Well, you know, that's a good question. And once you've gotten this thing built, so, once you've got it built, it just makes money. There's very little upkeep, except maybe power washing the panels every quarter or something. You monitor them, there's minimal amount, they're very passive. There's not a lot that has to be done.
There's no moving parts.
If you go out of business-
What happens if the law which allows this to happen is rescinded?
So, we've already got guaranteed these laws are gonna be in place. These credits are good until the thing's got returned.
Do you get this from the state?
Pardon me, yes.
Uh-huh.
Well, the people financing them wouldn't be jumping in if they thought that was the-
So, yeah, I think, I'll just add to that. I think part of this here is they, in order to get any of these fields funded, they have to come up and say, "Okay, we're gonna do this for twenty years." Because you gotta have, no one's gonna lend money to you to build a farm if it's not gonna be guaranteed. Someone along the line, if there's gonna be money there for the twenty-year period. So even if we build it out, it's guaranteed that for twenty years, the system's gonna be in place. It goes for both of us.
You have to forgive me, I don't have that much confidence in the state's guarantees.
You gotta take that leap of faith.
Once they return out, so we have guarantee, and there would be, you know, class action suit, because there's literally billions of dollars worth of investment money in these fields at this, at this point in the state. The state would, I would say, would really have a hard time-
You could be more bankrupt than what they are now?
Yeah, it would be a real firestorm. Go ahead.
I just have a question when we got to this, I missed the first meeting, so what's the state from the question?
Thatcher Street, Bridgewater.
So it's not the original one?
No.
Okay.
So, these are three landfill sites, one of them is in East Bridgewater, that's the Thatcher Street. Then there's one in Plainville, and then also another one in Randolph. And these are all landfills, cap landfills. Those are the sectors.
And how long will it be before those things are in operation?
They are late stage of permitting at this point, so it'll be shovel, it'll be digging ground in the next month. So to be done, it'll be done last quarter this year, first quarter next, and that's when they'll actually be COD, they'll be plugged in, and we start assigning the credits.
Sandy?
Can I ask a little bit about the logistics of how we're supposed to be getting the credits and paying money back out?
Sure.
Are we still gonna be billed by National Grid?
Yes.
And you understand that we don't have one electric, electricity account with National Grid? We have several.
Yeah, like Quincy, the city of Quincy has three hundred and thirty.
Yeah, we have twenty-six. So, would each bill be recognizing a credit?
So, what you, what you do is you, you can, when you take that Schedule Z I mentioned, okay, we list the other account. We can list four accounts and wait it according, you know, take the credits and split it up. This account should have twenty-five percent, this should have ten percent. So you can wait it to your different accounts. Or, the easier thing to do is have what they call a consolidated billing. And you can take all your bills, all your accounts, and they can be on one master bill with the accounts all listed and all the information. And then you're able to essentially allocate anywhere you want, because it's all being sent to one bill, and you just move it around, you just move the credits around. So the credits come on your bill.
So, yeah, so I guess I'm not understanding how we're getting the money to give back to you. So we have the bills come in, and say it was supposed to be for a hundred dollars, but we get credits. So we will have credit for what, seventy-five dollars? But we can only recognize a twenty percent credit and then give you the rest?
So, if you have a hundred-dollar bill, we're gonna send you credits for that completed hundred to match it, right?
To match the whole hundred.
To match the hundred, right?
So our electricity bill would be zero?
So it'd be, it would be zero. But you're gonna send us-
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent back.
Eighty dollars.
That's gonna then give you that twenty percent that you keep for your net savings.
So you expect that we would get enough credits so that it will cover all of our electricity bills?
That we can, yes, we can do that, that's up to you.
Depending on how much we sign up for.
Right, right, so you can cover your complete usage, you can choose to cover partial usage. Let me see, um, let's see.
But you would base the credit that we get on what National Grid would've charged us, not on what we would get charged using the supplier that we use?
I very well do.
So, so-
Do you know what I mean?
I do.
So-
So right now, our supplier is charging us eleven cents for-
Your supply.
Supply, eleven cents per kilowatt.
And then you have transmission and distribution.
But sometimes, right, so sometimes National Grid's charging eight cents and sometimes they're charging sixteen cents. So you're gonna base our savings on what National Grid would charge us?
With the credits.
So-
Well, that's what I mean.
Then, so if you have a third-party supplier-
What they would've charged us.
So if you, if you have a third-party supplier that's, instead of National Grid, like I said, you may have the savings. So forget about what National Grid would've charged you, because now we're gonna, then, we're gonna be giving you what, what your cost is. So we look at your bill, we analyze your bills.
We still get a twenty percent credit on our cost, not on the money.
Right. And, and like we said, they fluctuate, right? But you're always, you're always built in, whether it goes up or down like this a little bit, you're always guaranteed twenty percent. So we're always gonna adjust that to make sure you're getting twenty percent. Now, our credits in some cases, like, I was just, you know, I just mentioned the city of Quincy. Our credits are worth more than the city of Quincy, because they're huge. And they're able to buy cheaper than you are, right, here in Halifax. So, and we got into this, you know, people are trying to get a hold, like you are, but how do these numbers really work? And essentially what you do is you step back on that, because what we do is if our, if our credit is worth more than you, we're just, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take your number and we're gonna give you the amount of our credits that equal what you get. So, if our credit is five cents more than yours for what you pay, we're not gonna assign, we're gonna assign to you less generation credit so we can match, because we don't want to have more, because then that's paying, it doesn't hurt help anybody.
Can you explain that to the numbers-limited individuals like myself? I'd like to make it as simple as possible. Basically, you're gonna determine our twenty percent is gonna be based on what National Grid is charging us. Is that the highest or the lowest?
Or whatever you're paying, okay? So say you give Constellation or Trans-Canada, and you find that you're, because, and you own, why would you do that unless you're gonna save money? So, you're gonna be getting, your, your cost is actually gonna be less than what National Grid-
Okay, let me, let me put it this way. We get a bill from National Grid, we pay what we normally pay. You're gonna send us the net value of that.
Correct.
And we're gonna keep twenty percent. Is that, that twenty percent's gonna be clear profit for us?
That's gonna be your net savings. It's gonna, you're gonna be able to have that twenty percent that's gonna reduce your cost. We're trying to make it simple.
Who's on first?
Yeah, please.
What's on second?
Do a kiss for me, you know, keep it simple, okay?
Whatever you pay, doesn't matter, you know, whatever the distributor is, whatever you pay them, you're gonna get twenty percent reduction in that bill.
Right, whatever the amount is.
Whatever the amount is.
Yeah.
Because the credits are gonna equal a hundred percent.
You're still gonna get twenty percent of that figure. Because his farm is a National Grid, he is getting a net metering credit from National Grid for the amount that National Grid charges.
Okay, so he's getting an extra credit.
So, they do elect the money, yeah. The bottom line is, we get the twenty percent.
Well, I realize, I realize he doesn't wanna do this out of the goodness of his heart.
It's everybody, you know, needs to know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it gets muddled when you want to-
It gets all crazy, you know?
I tell you, it's, it's, it's actually simple, but in order to give you a simple explanation, it's so simple.
We're asking you specific stuff, which bringing us down another road.
So, I understand that she makes-
Town account. She's a town accountant.
So, that's a question the accountants generally ask, oh, how does this work? We will actually, we'll walk you through the process. Is that exactly how to do it, easy ways to do it, how you can allocate your accounts?
While she's walking through, I'll be crawling through it.
But it's, it's, for now, I think we might, to go in really deep into actually how that system works may, may not be a particular right venue. So could we maybe get a guy or something?
It's to make sure, because we allocate a certain amount of each one's electricity. So, I think, I think I understand how-
No matter what you allocate, we're gonna produce for you twenty percent savings. And then we'll show you how, because there's different ways to do it. You can either keep all your accounts as they are and allocate them, or consolidate your accounts.
That's something that-
We can show you how to do that.
My question is, is the age of twenty negotiable?
No.
It is what it is.
And if Sandy ain't happy, ain't nobody happy. If Sandy ain't happy, none of us are happy.
Understood.
Okay, so.
But, but what I think would be valuable for her, and again, I think we may be sort of drilling a little deep for our discussion today, but-
We like to get deep.
But I can have somebody, you know, who are billing experts, that can really, hold your hand, walk you through it.
That'd be great, we kinda would get them to send their bills out all in the same week, so.
See, that's why I'm a big advocate of the consolidated billing. Is, it takes all that sort of, it brings it all into one. And they, it doesn't cost you anything, they have to do it for you, and then it's all in one.
A hundred percent of our bill is predicated on how much of this we buy into, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so, I mean, we'd have to buy the whole thing in order to get twenty percent savings of the whole bill. Is that, because we were talking-
So, we were, say you have, say you use a megawatt, just to keep it easy. I know you use more, and we talked about-
One, three, or something like that?
So, say you use a megawatt, and you say, "We just wanna offset half of a megawatt." That what we do is we assign you half a megawatt worth of credits.
Right.
Which is less than twenty percent, or the same, twenty?
Those credits that we assign you for that half a megawatt of usage that you're gonna offset is gonna give you your twenty percent savings on that half.
On that half. That's what I was trying to get to. I just didn't want, if we bought half, I don't wanna leave it hanging that it's paying for the whole bill less, you know, we're saving twenty percent on the whole bill.
Right.
We're paying, we're gonna get twenty percent on whatever percentage of that that we buy, or buy into.
Yes, exactly.
Not buy, but buy into.
Right. And so, that's your call. That's what you are, you know, that's where we're going to here, is for you to get your information so you can then-
Make a decision.
Decide how you wanna go. Do you wanna full megawatt? Do you wanna half a megawatt? What is it that you want? First thing we need to do is make sure that you understand the mechanical process here, and then you go into finding, deciding what you wanna buy.
I just have a question about your business. So, Solden E Bridgewater 6000 is an LLC. Is it organized? Because we don't see it on the Secretary of State website.
So, every separate project has its own LLC.
Sure.
So that is-
Correct, because this project isn't even, it's in the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's gonna be the LLC for this particular project.
Any further questions?
Oh, you go ahead, Tom.
No, I'm just gonna say, the max that you were, just point of information, the max you were offering up was a megawatt? Is that what we were working with?
Okay, so your total usage, from my memory, was about 1.3 megawatts.
Yeah, that's how I remember it as well.
And so, and I think what we like, we don't want, we-
Don't wanna use it all.
Most towns are, have some kind of conservation efforts that they'd like to do, or-
We agree.
So you're agreeing, communities, and you must do some of these things. And you can expect, the, the, from my experiences, the plateau, if you will, on those conservation efforts is about eighteen, twenty percent, okay? That's, so we certainly don't, we don't wanna, we wanna give you twenty percent less than the one, the total 1.3, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all, I'm just-
So, I think, I'm sorry, I'll come back. Just let me finish this one thought. When we spoke with Charlie, we did some back-of-the-napkin sort of-
He likes to go back in the envelope.
Back of the envelope.
That we were talking, that we'd probably only wanna do 1.15 or some number of that nature. So we don't max you out, and you have your twenty percent conservation slack. So, for ease of purposes, yeah, say one, then you're clear.
Or any fraction. No, I was gonna ask was the, I was actually talking to Sandy. Sandy, when would you like to be able to make contact with his money person?
Um, if you notice him, then, then we, we need to sit down and talk.
Well, I'm not sure what's happening to me because it's, I, I need your input, you know, so whether or not it's workable, it's within your schedule too because you gotta do the legwork. You know, we, we're well aware of that, that's why, that's my question.
If I could just reassure you to some extent, I mean, the, this, uh, the net metering has been in place since two thousand nine. Um, and there's, there's probably, a third of the communities in Massachusetts, if not half, have some portion of, some amount of this in play. So it's, it's been pretty well exercised.
What's the percentage, what's the percentage of towns that have entered?
I would, I would have to say probably a, a third.
A third of towns.
The towns in Massachusetts have.
Have entered.
Have part, have this in place to some degree.
And when did, when you, how far does that go back, like, it started?
Two thousand and nine, the regulations started.
Okay.
And I'd say, when, when it first started, it was, you know, there was actual power purchase agreements or PPAs.
Yes.
Which was a lot more, um, complicated because you're actually purchasing power. And you had, it was procurement and you had to go through town meeting and you had to do, you know, a lot of, and it affected your power supply contract and all that. And that is different than the round robin net, net metering we're doing now because you were just basically purchasing, purchasing.
Correct, correct, my, my.
Yep, and so this is different because, and that, and this has been more common since about two thousand ten, where we switched to the net metering model because it was not public experiment, it's exempt from the, we didn't have to go through the, the, uh, town meeting process, it didn't violate, violate the bylaws of long-term contracts because it's not actually purchasing power. You're accepting your credit sharing mechanism.
Okay, so we talked a little bit about that, um, each project, it's its own LLC.
Correct.
Is there a parent company that oversees that particular LLC? That, LLCs don't normally work that way, but you, how does that work? Is there a parent company?
So, what you'll find very commonly in the solar industry, for instance, is you'll have, um, you'll have a, a layering of companies because there's three, I'd say distinct phases or milestones. First, you have pre-development, this is part of pre-development, you're securing a contract. Then also, you know, then you have to get the site and you have to get the permitting and you have to, you have the application process with, that's pre-development, before you dig anything up, and that's oftentimes a year, eighteen months, so it's, it's a long, and you could have two or three companies layered into that function.
Really?
Who have financial skin in the game.
Okay, so you have investors.
So, uh, there's investors, there's companies like SolTage and so forth that, that are invested themselves, okay?
Okay.
And then, as you get into the, so that's one milestone, you've got a project, you've done all the heavy lifting, it's, 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 the application's approved by National Grid, um, parallel, you're doing your work in the towns to get your permitting, is that another thing? And you've got a project that's ready to go viable and it's on the queue in something, Massachusetts Act of the Queue and the whole thing.
And then that's when it becomes an LLC?
Yes.
That's when you get a fine.
Okay, and, and as you do this, you're actually working with your fund groups. You know, we're connected to several major hundred million, billion dollar funding groups and.
So what's the parent company?
So like I said, right now, the parent company for this LLC is SolTage.
Okay.
Okay, and they are owned and funded by TICADA.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh.
And then, the, the next phase we get into is where you actually develop the site.
So who are we entering a contract in, if it's what we decide to do?
SolTage.
Okay. Who is not really owned by themselves, they're owned by a?
Fund.
A fund.
That's not, that's, that's not uncommon, that you'll have a company.
I just think about liability, who are we suing if this doesn't work out, like, that's what, that's my trail.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, so all of that will be, you know, there's a trail through the contracts that we use that you can, all the liability is, is traceable through that. Now, the, the thing is, and I wanna, actually, this is a good time to come back to what happens if you go out of business question. Fact is, once you get this thing funded, you get it in the ground, it's its own money-making entity. Whoever owns it at that time, because it could be sold.
It could be sold, exactly, that was my next question.
Whoever owns it at that time.
Right.
If, if any ownership is transferred, now in this case, SolTage and TICADA is going to be the owner, they're not leaving.
For about twenty minutes.
TICADA being the TICADA seed stock company, is that the same company?
Yeah.
No, 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 not, no, no.
Which one? Airbags, I meant.
No.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's an energy company in the Midwest.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It's not, no, no.
But they can sell, but our. So our.
It is TICADA, so.
It's a different spelling, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, it's confused, it does sound similar. So, so, um, it's an energy company in the, in the Midwest and they have a multi-billion dollar fund. And this SolTage is essentially a solar arm.
Okay.
Of, of this fund.
Which you're not mentioning now.
In this particular SolTage.
SolTage, so.
SolTage, they could sell the, they could sell the LLC and what happens with our contract?
So, if any sale or transfer happens, you need to, you need to, you know, contract has, you have to be aware of it. So you always know.
What if I don't wanna enter into a contract with another person?
Then you can say no.
Okay.
Because, but that's, that's the, the key is if there's a transfer in ownership.
We have the right to.
You have the right to say, we don't, we're not good with that.
Okay.
Or if, we'll consider if you prove to me that, that I can feel comfortable with whomever is buying it.
So how often do they get sold?
Well.
I gotta say it happens relative to be.
I would say it's more of the rule and the exception.
Thank you, yeah, okay.
Obviously, in this industry. This is an exception, I think, because of the, I, I know the intentions of the funding group and I know they plan to own this, all these for duration.
Best laid plans are made in minds. Anything can change.
True, but again, I think the, the key, the key factor here is that if there is a proposed transfer, you need to be aware of it. You have, you have to be comfortable with it or you say no, okay? And by, by uncomfortable, you have to understand whose hands you're gonna be in, who you're gonna be partnered with and how viable are they and so forth. However, I would say that once these things are up and going, the money, it's a money machine, so.
So we can do better than twenty percent, is that interesting?
This, that right now, any, most of the other contract options that I've seen out there are fifteen. This is, this is a good deal.
Can you just tell me a little bit about a release that I'm reading from two thousand and fifteen that says, "Solar energy developer to pay three hundred and thirty thousand over claims it violated net metering agreements," and it's that company. S O L T A S Energy Corpse. Let's see. No?
No, that's SolTage.
That's not your company?
No, SolTage.
Okay.
Okay.
You just spelled that.
S O L.
T A G.
Okay, cause this is S O L T A S.
T O G.
Yeah.
T O G for your SolTage.
Well, there you go.
A G E, S O L T A G.
Sounds very French.
Okay, and wonder why they got, I wonder why they got in trouble though, do you know anything about that?
Can we read it again?
That's something we're not gonna solve.
No, I understand, but I'm just looking, you know me, Troy, I'm, you know, this is. Uh, let's see, this was done, uh, "Solar energy developer has agreed to pay three hundred and thirty thousand over allegations that causes central Massachusetts towns and nonprofits to lose thousands of dollars in energy savings when it failed to honor agreements to sell them net metering credits," attorney, uh, General Mara Healy announced today.
So, what that sounds to me like is that they sort of, uh.
They're frauds.
Uh, no, there's, there's, there has been some very, again, with the legislation out there. I, I can assure you that there's been contracts formed that were not able to be fulfilled because of the, the legislation and what they did with the managed growth and cutting the queue down and then nobody could develop anything. And meanwhile, all of these contracts oftentimes have timelines on them.
Okay.
And if you can't, if you can't, that should be part of the force majeure, actually, is if the legislation prohibits you from fulfilling your contract, that should not be your fault.
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't you have known that before you went into it?
Or, how do we know that?
Yeah, they changed.
They changed it in midstream loss, right? So, that could be it, or what I'm suspecting is that would be more, maybe the case as well, is that they had a contract and gave the, the capacity to someone else.
Okay.
That would be more it, because you should be protected from the, if, if it's beyond your capability because of a legislative matter, you should not be held liable for the non-fulfillment of the contract because it was out of your hands. You were, you were there to do it, you did it in good faith, you put a contract together and it ran out because of an legislative move. However, I think the more, it's, what sounds more like this is, is what they did, is they, they may have like oversold and just said, you don't get it now, we give it to somebody else.
Okay, and that wouldn't happen in this case? Why?
Cause as soon as you sign a contract, we'll give you, you know, we'll give you the deal.
Okay.
But, it's first come, first served.
Anything further?
Um, yeah.
I have to be honest with you, it's first come, first served.
I understand it's first come, first served.
Talking with many communities of Quincy.
And that's fine, and we can talk to many companies as well, so we totally get it, it's the same.
I just wanna be upfront.
Yeah, no, and we wanna be upfront too, that there's other ponies in town, so, yeah, okay.
Horse shows.
Horse shows. There are plenty of horse shows.
No, not going in.
Water horses.
So, you are offering a three point five allocated percentage, but you're not willing to go higher to favor of the town? Like, you're not looking to hot, you will not hire the percentage that we would receive, it's twenty percent, okay?
This is a very unique situation here, there's probably not any other projects that are gonna be ready or be available before the, the legislation changes again.
January, is it?
So that's, January is when the rebates go away, the federal tax.
Do you, when is that?
January.
Okay.
If you don't have, if you haven't hit certain milestones with the project by January, you don't get the same credits.
Okay.
Tax credit, and so what, if, if people aren't very far along in the process, their, their, their model is, is gonna be gone. Their financial model will be gone.
Okay.
Okay, the second thing is that the legislation in Massachusetts, they're changing, they wanna change the value of the SRECs and so on, which would, is basically at this point through the grapevine, it's gonna be forty percent less, which is completely gonna change whatever we would be able to offer communities.
Okay.
Now, that's in front of us right now.
And you, do you have any municipal references that you've dealt with, like any towns that you?
Oh, yeah.
You do?
Oh, sure.
Could you provide those to us? Perfect, and how many towns do you think you have? You, I know a third of Massachusetts, but how many towns do you think?
Uh, total, probably, two dozen, maybe thirty.
Okay.
Thirty towns, we, we've got, um, fifty megawatts built, total.
Okay, towns and cities?
Yes, yes.
So you provide for, for Quincy, obviously, cause you mentioned.
Quincy's in.
Negotiating with Quincy now.
Oh, okay, what's the largest city that you, um?
Lowell.
Lowell, okay, Bernie?
That's it?
Yeah.
So, um. So you, we'll get you some.
Okay, perfect, I think I'm done with my questions.
I'm good, I'm good. So, Jared?
Well, I'd like to do, unfortunately, only two of us from the solar community could make it tonight. Alamoa Chairman is in Ohio on business, he could make it. I had, I just sent an email to drop back and forth and he was very, uh.
Annoyed.
Yes, to say the least. Now, on the back of the envelope, let me give you some of the items that we've put down on paper, just so you can look at. And again, it's basic numbers, it's nothing, little detail, but it gives you a, an idea of what we're looking at.
They made it nice and big, you're the man.
Yeah, I can actually read without my glasses.
And as far as the committee goes, we're really in favor of building our own system.
You are?
We are. We can put a one megawatt, uh, up on the landfill with no problem. And I think, as you've already mentioned, it's a money-making business. And once it's built, the pay is guaranteed for twenty-five years. We certainly expect that we get thirty years out of the system. So we're looking at a long-term basis on this year. I mean, bottom line, estimated cost that we got, we did get it from a, a developer and granted, the sale was a little back before the changes in the system, but two point seven five to build it. The revenue stream, I mean, just our savings, what we pay for in the first ten years, this is on a ten-year basis. Uh, we're gonna spend, uh, three million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand on electricity, which is actually more than enough to take care of the building of the, the site. If you drop down to the second one, which is the SRECs, whereas, that's uncertain because as you mentioned, in January, they're gonna come out again. But at the bottom, I put down, same thing, only with thirty percent. I mean, we're looking at a million two seventy-eight, just on values of the SRECs within that ten-year period.
That's, are you figuring them on what they're projected to be?
What's that, what's, he's saying forty, I'm saying thirty, just to get you a longer number, we're not sure what they're gonna be. So basically, if we looked at it, in ten years, you will have paid for the system and we would've got the rebate that we would've got from their company in that ten-year period. The next ten years, it's all free money. And then for the ten years after that, it's free money. Maintenance on a solar farm is very, very limited. There's gonna be some costs in there, we might have to change some of the electric rectifiers out or whatever.
Taking some bolts.
But there's, basically, the system is in, you're gonna, you're gonna pay the. The bottom line, I think that we have to look at is, is the town one, two.
Well, that's, that's.
One of the one.
That's.
And the two point seven five that we got, it's a design build. They build it and they want us really to buy it back off them within five to seven years. Cause that's basically when they make their money and they're out the door. We own the system. And naturally, we're gonna ask you if you wanna put the price that'll build us a farm up there, one megawatt.
We, 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 we could, we, you know, in the past, we would, we always would entertain that. But I think, what I was just outlining to you before is that, um, I'm afraid, I'm afraid time has gone for it. As I, as I said, generally, even with one megawatt site, you've got eighteen months to get through just National Grid's impact study. So, that takes you outside of your financial model and it's a completely different financial model without that, that re, that tax rebate. And, uh, there's not.
The, the federal tax rebate for the person that built it is still in effect.
No, no, it has to be, it has to be built, it has to be built, it has to have certain milestones by January, two seventeen, it's over.
I thought that the government, when they extended it, they extended it to five years.
No, no, so, this is, this, this is why, what I would say is, is, would be my biggest problem is that, because I, I just came off of a situation out in Western Mass where we had smaller sites that were supposed to be what they call expedited processing, and those should've been done within a maximum of sixty days and it took them, they still haven't done it, and so it's over a year of, of business days. And, um, you know, it's, it's eighteen months to get through anything at megawatt or so.
Well, there seems to be a disagreement on the, on the, on the timeline on the.
Yeah, unfortunately, Alan's the guy that, he's in the business, that's what he does. He knows the ins and outs of what's going on, so I can't really answer that portion of it. The only thing I can look at is the dollars and cents, we see that the town consumed the benefit.
Well, a, as you know, one of the, the big issues we have is, is whether that top will fund it or not. I mean, we're going, there's changes as it is, trying to get some buildings built up and.
I understand that, but this is, this is the return.
No, I, 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 I see the return.
We should pay for the buildings that we want.
I understand that, I'm sure the board maybe understands or some of the stand, but then, there are certain voters out there that may not understand that or may not wanna understand it and they vote for it, so, to be, that's, to be indirect and honest, well.
Depends on how it's structured and how fast it comes back.
Well, right now. Well, right now, right now...
There's a lot to look at, but I mean, you know, I just look at the dollars and cents, and I look over the town could benefit by it. I mean, as, as time goes on, it's gonna be tougher and tougher to get funding for, for the operation of the tunnel.
Oh, absolutely.
There's, there's no question about it, so, you know, that's the way it's come.
Just, can I add one thing?
Get your phone last, and we're ready to close out, 'cause we're half an hour...
This'll be real quick. The question came up about siting and DEP, just for the sake of mentioning it, I spoke with DEP, and it can be as little on a brownfield if everything's in place, and we don't need to do any major work, and I'm thinking where we capped that landfill about eight years ago, we shouldn't have to do any major improvement.
We did, we did a sidewalk up through there, and it looked, it looked pretty decent, I mean, we looked at the, the space, there's a road that goes through it right now, that road would disappear.
Yeah.
Because that was a good portion, and we would have to get the whole portion so we could get the amount of solar panels in it immediately.
Has there any studies been done on it, though, any recent studies, any evaluation?
Well, we're doing, um, monitoring every year. Uh, it was, it was capped, we have a contract for monitoring, which is part of the DEP regs.
Right.
Um, and when I spoke to DEP, they said, you know, that was a great thing, 'cause that helps expedite the process a little bit. It could be as little as six months to get through, um, a brownfield siting, which is a little different than your average siting.
Is this actually a landfill or a brownfield?
Uh, I don't know if it's a designated brownfield, it was a capped landfill.
It's a landfill.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the landfill, then, uh, six months is very...
Well, he said six to 12 months, he said, depending on how, how well-maintained it's been, and what kind of documentation we have.
From experience, and again, I won't, I won't be long, but we, we've dealt with other landfills that are, that are being monitored, that have been monitored for years, and they're not any closer, and it's gonna cost them tens of millions of dollars to get it right. And there's, there's a lot to it, and if there aren't any definitive indications, then you really have a process just to evaluate and come to a decision on that?
Well, I was just suggesting we follow up on it, it had to do with whether it was a, a mounded landfill, a flat landfill, which it happens to be.
A flat landfill.
It was abandoned 30 years ago, so it's definitely an old landfill, it was capped.
Which is good.
Yeah, and it was capped properly, we spent the money to cap it, so, uh, he, based on what information I was giving him, and obviously, he wasn't looking at it, he wasn't researching it, but he thought it could be done in as little as six months to 12 months.
Yeah.
And I just wanna touch upon what Charlie said, okay?
Yeah, go right here.
It's about the bond, it's about a 2.7 million dollar bond, and again, I think that's a challenge. I think it's something that we should think about, but I just wanna say that with the senior center and all those other things that we need to fund, I know in the long run, you know, it's gonna make us money, and we need to make sure that the taxpayers are willing to make their tax bills spike in order to accomplish that.
Yeah, but then, the tax bill really won't spike. If you take what you're gonna pay for electricity, and you're paying off the, the bond itself.
So you're saying, do it within the bond, you're saying, do you try to do it within the levy?
Well, he's saying a design build, which means that they're gonna go out and build it, and then...
They're gonna build it, we'll have a lease on it, but what I'm looking at is we buy the lease out within five to seven years.
Exactly, but that, that means we're not paying for it immediately, is what I was getting at.
See, 'cause this is a discussion that we, we need to have, at another time.
And the sooner the another time would be, the better, because time is mine.
Well, yeah, we need to do this.
Do we wanna do a...
It's, it's obvious at this point, at least on my part, that I'm not ready to make a, make a call on, on some assignment agreement, which at this time, some more information definitely needs to know, and I'm, I'm playing the dummy, I don't, I don't understand it all, 'cause I understand it, I don't wanna vote on it.
Do we wanna do another meeting just on solar, like another mini-meeting on solar?
We, we should meet with the solar committee.
I would like to wait and see what, what Charlie has to schedule, in the next couple of weeks before we schedule something else, but I'd like to think we should try to do some, hopefully, before September.
I do the end of the month, because I think, uh, Alamo mentioned it was two weeks out, anyhow.
Oh, he is.
And we understand that you're thinking of other commitments or possibilities to...
Yeah, well, I, I have to continue the process.
Yeah, absolutely, we understand.
We're, we're, we're up against...
But would you understand where we're coming from, too?
Oh, I do, I, I understand completely, I just, I need to be transparent, and I appreciate that. I, I, I understand, this is, you know, you've just gotten this, what, a week ago?
Yeah.
And there's, there's a lot to it, you know, you need to understand the mechanisms, we, I understand, I've been doing this for years now.
It's a meat and potato type situation, the meat's not cooked quite yet.
Sometimes it's taken me a year to get through this process, so, I get it.
So you don't mind giving us more than we need?
Yeah, I get it, but I just need to be very upfront with you, that we're in a very tight, tight situation.
One of the pox first pox.
And if, you know...
We get it.
I'm on the phone with Quincy on Friday, if they say go, I'm gonna have to call you guys and say...
We will be back, we will be back to you as soon as possible, and if for some reason Quincy does be your, your golden egg, then so be it.
So be it, right?
Right.
But, so as long as we all understand each other, I, I, I understand that you have to work through this, it's a new, you haven't done, it's, it's just come across your desk.
Well, we have a unique situation too, where with considering building our own site, we don't wanna, I don't wanna preclude that, I don't wanna...
You, you do, you do, and there's, again, I think we discussed briefly some ways that we could probably make the best of both worlds happen for you, if you wanted, but you, you have to be comfortable with the, the basic mechanics first in order to say, you know, gee, you know, maybe we'll take X, and we'll, we'll go, we'll give that time if it indeed does have time.
Well, we talked about 250, um, which was a possibility for you.
Do that, and there'd be, you know, that would be, uh, you know, that could offset it.
If we're using 1.3, and we can generate 1, and we got 250, that kinda plays in.
Okay.
So, give it some thought.
We will, we will be a touch.
Thank you, Jerry, for coming.
Thank you very much for coming in. Jerry, your input?
So do you just wanna let Charlie know?
Yeah, we'll, we'll set another time.
Yeah, I'll get a hold of that, Alan's the best one, I'm pretty much a...
Well, I'll see you next Tuesday, anyway, you're gonna come to our hearing.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, awesome.
Have a safe drive, I'll, thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah, it's Kim.
All right, have a great night.
Thank you for being so patient.
Didn't think that was gonna go on.
Well, I...
But it's important.
It's huge, I don't, like, I wanna feel totally comfortable, and I don't wanna feel rushed, I mean, disrespect, but, but we can't make our decisions...
We have law enforcement in the House. Hey, Sarge, you don't have to sit back there if you don't want to, you're getting comfortable.
I have a gun, it's my turn.
Officer Bucieri, it's going well.
Did you explain to him that he's not supposed to be dressed better than me when it comes to these things?
Yeah, I gotta give him a one...
Oh, okay.
He's Italian, he can't help it.
So I, I guess we're here for, for a couple of different reasons, one, um, it's a new board since, since I've been in, so just come in, introduce, say hi, and, and get to talk with each other. But, in reality, what's happening is, um, I'm gonna have a retirement coming up first year, and instead of being behind the ball, we're replacing people who aren't...
Retroactive, we'll be proactive.
Right, and this'll be the first time in a long time that we've been able to do that, and that's, um, you know, that's, that's been my goal for a long time, is have people ready to go, and, um, with the board approving that last meeting, we've been moving, so, uh, we, we called for, um, the solar service list, and it came up with our permanent commitments that are available to go full-time. It came out on top of us.
Excellent, congratulations.
He's been working very well with us, uh, nobody's had any problems or issues, uh, I, I think, uh, I think he'll be a fit in the long run, hopefully, and, um, he's, he's gonna be my recommendation to the board, so...
And when will he be going to the academy if he...
Well, if, if the board sees fit, um, what we need to do is a conditional offer of employment at this point, which will encompass uh, medicals, PAT test, path in the academy, and a true opening, 'cause until somebody leaves, so... He understands that, you know, he can go through this whole process and graduate the academy, and if I don't have an opening, um, then, you know, that's just the way it is. Um, I don't foresee that happening, and I, I think, uh, I think we will have one in January, that's the direction it's going, so... So, to answer the question is, um, again, if the board sees fit, um, we're gonna try and get him in the September academy, October, October, I think, October 1st. So we, we have to do a couple more things to get him ready, but, all right there.
So what's your feeling on that, Jerry?
I'm extremely excited, uh, it's been, been a PI now for about a year, um, tons of great experiences, I've worked with a ton of great guys, I see all of you guys at every event that I'm detailed at, so I feel like I'm, like, like Chief said, I think I'm just, um, fitting right in perfectly, and, um, I'm, I'm absolutely ready to go to the full-time academy, and ready to take this next step in my career.
Excellent, excellent, that was gonna be my question, are you enthusiastic about this?
And, and does the term fair, firm, and consistent mean anything to you?
Yes, absolutely.
You heard that before?
I can't believe it's been a year already.
Yeah, I started training, I started in Sterling in, in August.
I know, it's just gone by so quickly, but you, you are everywhere, and you've done a lot.
And you don't look any older than the day you started.
I appreciate that.
I know, but you are, you know, you are filling shifts, and, you know, whenever we need you, you're there, and you know, I just wanna do a special shout-out to Officer Bucieri, because when the HOPS committee needed a volunteer for the dunk tank, and he not only stepped up and participated, and all the kids loved it, he dunked, but you know what?
And they didn't even warn the order for you either.
I know, they did, I tried, we did try, and he did, he, he did two tours, because we were sorta low on volunteers, it was a kind of a yucky day, so it was a pretty tough thing, so...
I used to do that, 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 that was my chore, you know, dropping the tank.
I think that you understand the spirit of the community, and being a police officer in this community means that you're part of the community, and that people know you and see you, and that makes them more, feel more comfortable, I know the kids loved dunking you.
Absolutely.
You know, I threw terribly, didn't I, I was awful, I'm, full disclosure.
In, in regard as of what's happening across the country, there's a high respect for the police officers in this town and this area, and you can believe that you get all the corporates you can from this school, as long as they're here, and if they're not here, change, 'cause it's important.
Absolutely, so I would, uh, and I would make a motion that we offer, um, Officer Bucieri a conditional offer of employment subject to the passing of a PAT test, um, the passing of a medical exam, successful completion of the police academy, and that there is an opening in the department for you to fill a full-time position.
Viable, very happy to second that. Any further discussion?
Noble Oms, come here, all in favor?
Aye. Yay!
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We expect great things.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, that, and, and that brings up the next issue, is that depletes my part-time list, so I will be back shortly to ask, to, uh, refill that with, uh, as many as I can, four or five hopefully, so that we, uh, we, we stay ahead of the game like we are now, so...
What P number will you be?
Uh, that's not the P8, right?
I think it's eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only appropriate that Italian recommends an Italian.
Eight is great. Thank you so much, thank you for your patience, we didn't expect you to know that, huh?
And, you know, I wish dearly that everything goes as planned, and, and you, you were on board in January for us full-time. Isn't that right, Sergeant Bennett?
That's right.
Couldn't leave you out of this discussion.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
And once again, thanks for being impatient.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Roy.
Have a good night.
And unless there's something further that we need to take, come before this board, I will entertain a motion to a jury.
I will make that motion.
Happy to second that one, too.
All in flavor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, everybody, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Sandy.
No problem.
Okay, taking my pen back.
Um, so I...